Yeah.
Yeah, there are this morning and some up no doubt but uh there was a little something. Yeah, it's uh made an end of the balance now and I'm worried.
Where is it coming from? Which way?
West. Uh it's not a big. Uh it's low right.
What was your? Did you get full Thursday? That oh. That's a big one still.
Oh.
I I.
Yeah, it's like they're force feeding you though. They just kept on getting you eat. Just fuck is that? It's alcohol. Okay. Where we going?
It was good.
But the but the reaction was not bad. Good morning.
Morning Chris, how you doing? I'm doing well.
How are you? Pretty good.
That was your morning silence.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Let's see him. How did you see that in?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Three hundred and eighty grand. Yeah, he's one of the that's one of the. You gotta be good at football, but you gotta be smart too to go there. So so he's got them both. He gets he gets his brains from me and that's my mom.
Okay. Well, now we know the truth, man.
That's right.
He can get some brains from his dad and some. Okay, she's like, you know what that one?
His mom or my wife, she ran she was she ran a track for Texas Tech.
Oh, really?
She was on track.
Which which one?
She was a high jumper. Yep, she's a she's a three-time state cheer actually.
Where'd she go guys?
She went to Seagraves way out west. West Texas. So thank you.
I'm doing well. I got it. All right.
Hello. Brandon Barton. For who? Okay.
You know, I'm sure there is something through that.
Sitting in for the partner.
Get it. You ready?
I'm ready.
I gave myself a haircut yesterday. I looked it on TV.
What you keep?
Uh he's not here today. Help me last week he was there.
Scotty.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Waiting for Christie is here. I'm gonna get you out of the super bank. Hold this baby. I'm done. The latest way to the end is anybody working that.
Yeah, let me know. I heard.
I'd like to get the meeting started. Our invocation will be led by um David Barton.
That is great. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today and our many blessings. Father, I just thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning, be a part of this meeting. I thank you for each and everyone that is here in attendance today and the families they represent. Father, I ask that you do with these commissioners as they make important decisions for you and the Vansant County. And I ask that you watch over us as we travel to our next destinations following this meeting today. Be with us in everything that we do each and every day. Father, I ask that you forgive us of our sins and all this pray in your name again.
Amen. All right, our pledges, pledge to American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to free public rights and justice, one nation, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Pledge our Texas flag.
I am in Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under uh one. Uh maybe.
I would like to call this meeting to order at nine oh two January the eighteenth and uh as we do have a quorum. Commissioner Pearson will not be with us today. He is out. Commissioner Pratt is out chasing cows down a county road. They're his cows, so he hopes to be back before the meeting is over. In that regard, okay. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the commissioners' court and approval of the same for December twenty second, twenty twenty-two and December twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Show move.
Motion moved by Commissioner Milton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barton. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of the county bills for paying as submitted.
So many. All right, well, well, I do have a look. I'll go into discussion. If we don't have discussion after we make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll say it. Motion is made seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Any on that cop scene that Pat George wanted? I think we we need to take that out and and discuss why he needs that since we got Southern software.
You said the cop scene?
No, it's.
Yes, cop scene. I think we but said.
Oh, who's vendor is?
Yeah, the vendor.
The business.
Uh logistic, uh logistic, yeah.
I'll find that where the.
Collegiate. Pardon? Collegiate. Yeah, collegiate with a K, yeah.
That goes in there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's under it's on page seven uh under cop scene. The item in reason, send a collegiate. Two hundred and seventy dollars.
Two hundred and seventy dollars?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, just take it out for now. Let's ask the pet fine agents since we we do have that Southern software now and all the other console I think it went to there. He needs it. That'd be a different situation. But if he doesn't need it, well. We'll.
I'll I'll figure it out.
Thank you.
So do we need to amend our motion or?
Well, uh. I I make a motion. I amend my motion to exclude collegiate cop scene, uh two hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay. Most of them. Saying all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Post and then, okay, so the motion has been amended. Any further discussion? If not, then we will now vote on the amended emotion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passes. All right. Item number four, discuss, consider ratifying of counties' bills as submitted.
Come on.
All right. Second, second, motion has been made. Second, is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number five, general announcements. Do we have any general announcements? No announcements. All right, move to item number six, public comments. Do we have anyone sign up for public comments? All right, item number seven, uh discuss and consider a budget amendment from the contingency line to repair maintenance buildings. Okay, is that uh? Cash. Good morning. Jim. Okay, would you straight state your name and?
Captain Ollie Williams with the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you.
Back in July, on July twenty-second, um we received, we got a PO for jail door repairs. It was something that was approved through commissioners' court. I think we took many of the lapped salaries and moved it into the budget for building maintenance. It's it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Parts were on back order. They couldn't get everything done or couldn't get all the parts in. Um they've been working, keeping in contact with us, but whenever the new budget year started, this money didn't get rolled over into this budget. So they're ready to start the repairs tomorrow. So we're asking to get the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from the contingency fund to be able to run the repairs to jail doors.
Okay. Sandy, do you have any input?
Sandy, she is correct. We be in there a hundred and fifty-eight thousand from thousands of employees lying down and putting uh the court did a. Cause they didn't love room, thirty thousand dollars. Things kind of like I sent you a copy of.
Yes.
The whole edit of some discretionary thing in in the project and. I did not under I did not. I wasn't informed that that project did not get played at the moment we were doing that in the year. So that money did not get rolled in. We talked about the cars. There were several. I mean, we did talk about the turkey tours that we can come back and extend this budget. But it's the mental part of it, so. It's now been brought on my attention that. We have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the sixty line. Um. That's not looking at their budget. There's only nowhere move that amount of money. I don't know. They have sixty-one thousand in the budget for it, but I can't. Are you gonna use that part as well?
That wasn't in the plan because we're so early in the budget year that we don't want to drain the budget. And you know, January, and we still got until October to, you know.
This early in the year, we don't belong to the voters from salary, you know, from the personnel lines. I did project this morning as before they all that managed, because we know the jail is not police there. Uh there's a little bit of excess of five hundred thousand dollars right now in that line in their person. I don't know before it comes together. Maybe we're there and we're watching off the watch the standards are on the first line. Or if you actually want to start using your contingent. One day, whenever the court. It's running.
I mean, yes, my question is, what have you been doing with the jail doors since July? I mean.
Right.
Right.
About two things really.
Yeah.
There's maybe good you also with the control center.
Mm-hmm.
Control control of all doors, south of all doors, all the issue there and issues on several of the jail doors and so on. And it's here.
So they're ready to start? They're ready to?
Yes, sir.
And how long?
Start of the morning with, and expect them. I don't know.
Since July.
Yeah.
And how long will it take them to get the work, the job completed?
I think they told me it was seven days. Yeah.
Seven days.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh has the sale been empty?
No, the sales have been, but they have had to use either. There's some of them that only a key will unlock and the control panel won't unlock, and then there's some that are vice versa.
Won't consistently unlock.
Yeah. It's not just one sale. It's it's multiple locks throughout the jail.
Well, it's you have any, it's hard to find parts for these.
Yes.
Doors anymore. These these things are antiquated.
They're uh yeah, these things are special. You can't go to Harvard's for it to get parts. The unified department for these things are specially built. You can't afford it. They get a lot of wear and tear. The food insert food being called of the port next to that. So at the end of the day, when the people are feeding, they still, then you have a model of down doors. It's just it's anything's total door extremely.
Why don't we move money from the salaries and we got the contingency fund? Can we just move it from there? And that what it's for? And it's like for emergencies if it's there?
Yes.
So why would we move move money from the salary lines? Why can't we just use it for contingency line?
We can. Yeah.
It's it's our decision.
This is like that motion. Like saying to say it, it's early on and they moving money. But Miguel, what you? It's gotta be done.
Yeah, it's gotta be done. And there it is. I saw we had money. It could be much bigger than that even way. And uh just trying to do those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just can make a motion. We moved the money for contingency.
All right, urge will make the motion to move the money from the contingency fund to the maintenance uh account. Second, I, Commissioner Barton seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passed.
Thank you, Derek.
Good, great. Thank you.
You bet. Item number eight, discuss and consider, uh discuss, consider and approve reapplying for the VOCA grant to fund the victim's assistance project in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term. Yes, sir.
Yes, Judge. My name is Tyler Woodwick. I'm an assistant district attorney for Vansant County Attorney's Office. Ms. Curry wishes she could be here, but she's at a doctor's appointment, so she sent me. This one's gonna be a lot easier than the last one.
Okay.
Um we're here because we need to ask to the commissioners to approve us to ask for free money. We have a state mandate through the state that we have to have a victim's assistance coordinator position with Melissa Cheney in our office, and we are required to have one of these. We have found a way that we ask of for grant money. Um generally, I think we're projected this year, we're gonna ask for fifty thousand dollars, and that is free money. The downside is is that it is a twenty percent match from the county. So that projects out to be about sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. The way we have done this in the past is that the county pays for fringe benefits, insurance, those kinds of things that we would pay for any any county employee. Um and that would cover our our match under the grant. So we would ask to uh for approval to apply again for this grant. This is, I think, the ninth year that we have had this. Um again, state mandated. If we don't do this, then the county has to pay for all of it, or at least, you know, whatever the commissioner would approve for that position. Thank you, Judge.
Okay, just one, the agreement needs to be corrected. Um I sent an email to uh Ms. Curry, Ms. Uh that uh the last whereas in there needs to designate uh for myself as the county judge, it still has Donker Patrick in there.
I'm sure.
So if you.
Inverted mistake, Judge.
We have no problem. You have the the rest of it correct. So if you can get that corrected, then we will, and then it's approved, we will sign it. So is there a a motion to approve application?
Sure.
Second thing, motion is made second. Any discussion? Further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Judge.
Yeah, thank you. Item number nine, discuss, consider and approve adoption of the Vansant County handbook. And I believe our families. Very good.
Good morning. How are y'all?
You're doing well, Emily.
So I reached out to Tac back in December about the.
First of all, can you state your name for the video?
Yes, sir. My name is Emily Bedinger, and I'm the HR assistant.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so I reached out to Haley with Tac and back in December about our handbook because there would be a new judge and a new commissioner. So I wanted to make sure that the handbook was up to date whenever we had to hand them out to new employees. So all she said was that we would have to come before the court, and the new court would have to adopt the handbook for us to make any changes. So I can keep the old paper, but we wouldn't be able to make any changes under the new court. So all I'm asking today is that we adopt the handbook so we can make changes as we need with a new court.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton, sir, saying my Commissioner Billington. Uh any discussion? No discussion. Uh all those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You have your official approved handbook now. So that means now we can make the changes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. Uh item number ten, discuss, consider, approve the Texas County Lateral Road and Bridge Expenditure yearly report for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners.
This is Sandy Hill. Our auditor will be explaining this report.
The transport, the Texas Transportation Code two fifty-six point zero zero nine requires the Vansant County auditor to prepare the annual road and bridge expenditure report. And it is due by January the thirtieth. It's that comptroller's office. I supplied you with a copy of the report and the expenditures from each of your precincts that back the figures up on this report. For the record, the maintenance on roads for all four precincts was five million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then our other road expenditures, which does include all of the payroll, your fuel, your repair, any equipment payments. Um is four million, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars for totally expenditures for our road and bridge for Vansant County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two was nine million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine. If I look back at two twenty-one, we did have an increase of expenditures for the citizens of Vansant County on the roads in the amount of two million, thirty-two thousand, so.
Now that we spent two million more in twenty twenty-two than we did in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, we did. And you will get that. We filed this report, and then the state comptroller will send back what we call a lateral road and bridge fund payment. It's kind of like our tobacco settlement. You spend nine million and we get about fifty-five thousand back. So and we divide that between all four precincts based on your mileage.
Okay.
That is a revenue line.
Okay, make the motion to approve. So the motion has been made. And seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, like sign, motion passes. Item number. Eleven, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendments.
Judge, if I may ask. Can my office go ahead and prepare the budget amendment for the jail lot? It's not in this budget here.
Yes, because we.
So that we can go ahead and say to the.
We did approve it as a separate line item, so yes.
We did that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right, we just have one, a few others in here. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments? I'll motion it. All right, motion made by Commissioner Barton.
I'll second.
Motion second by Commissioner Milton. Uh is there any further, any discussion?
You know, what the? That ballistic shield, what the?
That was a grant.
I know, but what is it? Is it something you hold in front of you and depicts bullets or what?
There are armored vests.
Armored vests?
Yes. It's in as uh. A grant they applied for and received. To purchase some.
I mean, is that buy?
Yeah.
How many?
Two.
Four thousand bucks a piece for it.
This was, I believe this was something the governor's. This was, uh, I believe this was something the governor's, governor's office, uh, a program where they were offering this to law enforcement. Alls you had to do was apply.
That's good. I mean, I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, there's, there are vests. There'd be a good vest.
Yeah.
And they didn't stop, and people also stop when the robbery, the whole robbery. Yeah, they're.
Just out of curiosity, how much do they weigh?
They're producing now, like, like here, we have, I don't know, those same weight, but they throw a lot of weight, that's what we got. Yeah, probably fifteen pounds. We're running back, like, here, I'll play shot. But you think that, stop bullets, they hit that loud enough to go forward, to the camera. Same stuff, I'm sure, looking, they come here, finish, then all side and back. The shields is big, all the way to one.
And this, this isn't the first grant that we've gotten for these, is it? The, are you aware that, have we applied for any more than the other this?
Ground grants came up after, uh, she was.
Okay. How many we have? Does everybody have one? Every precinct have one? Or just? They don't? So, we just got two right now? Is all we got?
You got individual body armor, you didn't stop hitting them, we, all, we're, they, they. These plate carriers, they're, they look they look like over even though they're body armor, they put, we have a barricaded person.
Okay. They're not worn, they're not worn daily, then?
You sure it is? It's first one or?
Thank you, sure.
It's a value shoot.
Wow. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We did, we did most, yes, all those in favor? Uh, all opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss, consider monthly reports submitted by the various offices and departments of the county government and approve entry of the same and the course minutes as a matter of record. And I'm happy to say we have received all of the reports department.
Agly.
Except Agly, which we don't have someone to provide a report at the current time. So, uh, is there a motion to accept the reports we received?
Make a motion. I'll second it.
All right, motion was made in second half, uh, is there any discussion? Christie? We need some paper towels.
I think I got it.
Oh.
I got it.
Yeah, hey, okay. Uh, is there any discussion? If not, uh, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Yes, sir.
There is discussion, right?
Uh, Scott, on the last page of your report, the very last page. What, what is the, the Android notifications and change policy? Yeah, I don't know, that's what I asked you now.
Phones for that.
Yeah, so, this is like it worked for, uh, most of the six, the, uh, the auto management system we use. May as the the itself.
Okay. That's all. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. All right, we will now enter into a closed executive session at nine twenty-eight AM. The closed executive session is in compliance with section five-five one point zero seven-two, the Texas Government Code, and deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And Commissioner LaPrad is the one that.
He's on his way back.
Okay, he's on his way back, so we will, uh, we will go ahead and go into executive session and, uh, wait on him to return.